All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you can please take your seats. We'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the North Miami Planning Commission, Tuesday, January the 6th, 2015, at 7:00 PM, meeting in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Roll call of board members, please.
Kevin Seifert.
Present.
Charles Burns.
Present.
Gene Castor.
Present.
Kenny Eich.
Present.
Jason James.
Present.
Bill Prevattell.
Present.
Chairman, you have a quorum?
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Well, yes, sir. I mean, the water supplies, you know, update. The Public Works Director has asked that this item be moved first because we have consultants who don't want to have them sitting there and the city has to pay them.
All right.
Mr. Chair, that would be item PC 1-15 in the agenda, which would be the third item on the agenda, and the request is due to the fact that the city has retained a consultant and for expediency and savings, we requested this item be moved to the front of the agenda.
All right, the chair can accept that. All right, this is item PC 1-15. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, authorizing amendments to the City of North Miami Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes to incorporate the adopted 10-year Water Supply Facilities Work Plan by amending the text contained in the future land use, infrastructure, conservation, intergovernmental coordination, and capital improvement elements of the Comprehensive Plan, further authorizing the transmittal of the Comprehensive Plan amendments to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and all other reviewing agencies as required under Section 163.3184 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and an effective date. Staff report, please. Right, we'll get to this. Are we going to read this into the record, the staff report? Who's got the staff report? Yeah, we'll go back to that.
Actually, we just amended the agenda. You read the title, but we were supposed to approve the minutes right after that.
All right.
And also initiate or disclose any communications you've had with any of these items tonight.
All right, first, the approval of the minutes. Motion to approve. All right, motion to approve by Mr. Prevattell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Castor. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. All right, Mr. Secretary, there are the signed minutes. Now, the disclosure issues. Mr. Galdos, gentlemen, have any of you attended any of the different public hearings that run these events?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Eich did.
Yes, I attended the Central City Homeowners.
Central City, okay.
And then I walked the neighborhood today, taking a look.
Okay, yes. Is your mic on?
Yes, it's on now.
Okay.
I put my hearing aids in so I could hear everything.
Ah, yes, that would help.
Yes, and I too have attended the event last night at the community center. I've communicated with some of the council members. I've communicated with the council to the applicant. I've even watched some Walmart videos of these people, outrageous people, going in and out of the stores, and all of the correspondence, all the discussion was in trying to get more information regarding the project and trying to get more details, more clarity.
All right, I attended a public hearing a week ago at the Griffin Community Center. I think it was a week ago, may have been further back. It was the first public hearing that dealt with one of the items here tonight.
We're referring, as a point of order, Mr. Chair, we're referring to item PC 15-14 and items PC 16-14.
If those are known as the Walmart items, then yes, that would be true.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And does that hold true for all the other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I did not attend any of the events. The only thing that I am aware of is that the neighbors east of the area I live in.
Yeah, try to read into those mics. I know it's a long stretch.
I know. I hate this audio system here. The only thing that I am, I attended none of the events or any of the presentations. However, I am aware of the homeowners association, I believe, east of the neighborhood I live in, had been circulating a petition within my neighborhood, and I did not sign it or engage in any conversation with any of the people outside of one gentleman who did approach me, and I told him, identified myself as a commission member, and I could not discuss it. Other than that, that's all that I have knowledge of.
That all.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Galdos. All right, staff report, please.
Nixon Lebron, you know, zoning administrator, community planning and development. For this item, you know, staff has recommended, you know, approval of the proposed resolution of the mayor and city council, authorizing the city manager to adopt the Water Supply Facilities Work Plan developed by consultants, Tetra Tech Incorporated, in the substantially attached form as part of the statutory directive for the city of North Miami to satisfy water concurrency requirements, providing for an effective date and for other purposes. Again, consistent with the Florida state legislature in 2002, 2004, 2005, and recently amended in 2011, all local governments are required to have a work, I mean, water facility, you know, a plan. So the city has consulted the service of Tetra Tech, and then they have been, they have, you know, prepared that report for your review tonight, and the staff has recommended the approval of it. This is just an item that is required by the state legislature, and the city is just trying to comply with those started requirements.
All right, that concludes staff report. All right, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak to the water and sewer item may step forward. Anyone here to speak to water and sewer? Last call for water and sewer, none. Public hearing is closed. Commission discussion.
I thought they were all here for the water and sewer.
No, I don't think they're here for water and sewer.
I thought finally we'd have somebody for water and sewer. Mr. Chair.
The Water Department is deeply grieved. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask the Public Works Director a couple of questions.
Public Works Director is here. Will you please stand to the podium? Give us your name and title, sir.
Good evening. Whistler Pierre Lewis, Public Works Director, City of North Miami.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Eich?
On the, I'm looking at the annual consumption rate from 1994 to 2014 in the study, and my question is this. I see where it was very high in, I think, the year 1996, and it went down, and the water consumption for the city went down. If, in fact, we do the new land use ordinance, and we have multiple high rises, say, on Northwest 7th Avenue, hypothetical question, say, 20 stories, for example, something higher than that, will we have the production to service those buildings in the future?
Yes, we will. The study took all of those factors into consideration. We use the TAZs, which give you the projected populations, which are in line with what is recommended by the community planning department. And also, there has been evaluations done on the actual water distribution system as far as capacity and transmission of the water. In addition to that, we have a 20-year agreement with Miami Dade Water and Sewer Department, where they have agreed to supply us with any additional water that we may need. So all of those factors were concerned in this report.
Biscayne landings, let's say hypothetically, were able to change the land use and the height restriction and go higher, we will have the consumption capability.
Yes.
Great, thank you. That's all I wanted. Thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions on the water and sewer item?
Sure. Has the administrative building changed at all since last we spoke? We talked about possibly adapting it to the site a little bit better, maybe a little more conducive to the neighborhood. Has anything changed from when we last reviewed it?
From the last time when it was approved by the commission, we haven't revisited the architecture. It's at a standstill right now.
Okay, and as I've mentioned before, I mean, I'm someone who's actually gone out of my own pocket to take a stormwater drainage course, so, you know, I would kind of be interested in this sort of stuff in a bizarre kind of way. But it is rather complex, and it takes a bit of sophistication and experience to review this and truly digest it to see if it's in the right direction for our city. And I know we have an engineer with us, who I hope will give his input as well on the commission, but do we have in line possibly like a construction manager, a project manager that's outside that has the incentive of saving money for the city, implementing the best possible infrastructure at the best possible price? Because my fear is that all of us sort of glaze over this 20, $30 million, and everybody just goes, oh, it's water treatment, and leave it to somebody else, and therefore, we don't get a lot of public discussion, we don't get a lot of discussion on the commission. Do we need somebody that has a high level of expertise, a proven track record, that we could or should possibly bring in to monitor this and to help implement this overall plan? Because I fear that, I don't know if any of us really have an in-depth knowledge or interest in overseeing this, as we probably should. Thoughts? Your thoughts? Do we have anybody such as a outside owner's rep?
Outside, meaning a consultant. Yes, we actually do have. Our Tetra Tech is our owner engineer's representative, and we have someone from the firm here today.
Well, they're implementing this plan. I'm saying, as a sort of representative, to see that everybody is in order. It's a little bit different, sort of an owner's representative, which has the position of really more protecting the owners rather than sort of letting things possibly get out of hand.
Right. The design was done by, well, most of the design for the water distribution system was done by another consultant. We hired Tetra Tech to represent the city. So they are our engineering representative firm.
Separate from the design and implementation.
Right, separate from the design.
And they are not necessarily general contractors. They are overseeing the bidding.
No, they're engineers, qualified professional engineers.
Which will be overseeing the bidding process and stuff on our behalf.
Right. Every job that we put out goes through the procurement process. We, the designers go through the RFQ, request for qualifications, to make sure that they have all of the proper licenses and everything. Every construction project goes through the bidding process, so that ensures that we get the best price for the actual construction work. And then we have someone on staff beside, in addition to city staff, that's looking out for the best interest of the city.
And has that individual or that company actually looked over the project in terms of the project itself, not the bidding of it, but the actual design of it, as being in our interest and as efficient as possible?
Yes. Once we, as far as the water plant is concerned, once we enter the contract with the actual designers, we also enter the contract with the owner's engineer representative, and they have provided multiple comments with each submittal, the 30%, 60%, 90% submittal. They've provided feedback. They've looked over the engineer's design step by step throughout the entire process.
That's comforting. Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other comments from the commission? If not, the chair will call for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve.
All right, Kenny Eich moves for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Prevattell. All in favor?
Aye.
Water and sewer item passes. All right, there's one tome out of the way. All right, now, at this time, we move to PC 15-14. I need to ask the city attorney if these items are going to be quasi-judicial.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are two items that are quasi-judicial, and that would be item PC 16-14 and item PC 215. So before those items are presented, I would like to have the opportunity to administer the oath.
All right, we'll get to that. Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, now, ladies and gentlemen, we move to the nuts and bolts of what tonight's meeting is going to be about. Public Works, of course, is deeply disappointed that none of you are here to comment on the water plan. However, they're big boys, and their feelings won't be hurt too badly. They'll recover. For the rest of you that are here, how many are here for the first time? Just about all of you. Okay. Let me take a minute or two and try to orient you on how we're going to proceed tonight. The Planning Commission is an advisory body to the city council. We conduct public hearings. We are also a board of record. As a board of record, that means that everything that is said must be transcribed. Now, the difference between this and the other hearings that you attended in the community centers has everything to do with what we will politely call decorum. Each speaker must in turn state their name and address for the record, and will be given their three minutes to speak. Now, it's very important, whether you agree or disagree with a given speaker, this is not the time to make sound, noise, and catcalls. That was your prior two meetings at the community centers. Here, we are one at a time, for the record. In the event that someone chooses to appeal the recommendation of the commission, there needs to be a valid and concise and clear transcript. And so, we give each speaker an opportunity, and they get one bite of the apple, and I hope you all understand that. Every effort we've made to accord absolute respect to every citizen that is here, and we will be here till the sun comes up if necessary in order for everyone to be heard. Now, having said that, if we get to a topic where all of you wish to speak, it might be conducive for each row to select a representative to speak, because at three minutes to a head, you're looking at a little over five hours for each item here. So you need to think about that, okay? We don't want to discourage you. We want to structure your thought process. All right, first item up tonight will be PC 15-14. This is an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, adopting a small-scale land use plan amendment to the City of North Miami Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for four lots consisting of a total of 3.07 acres in size and generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of northeast 135th Street and Memorial Highway with Miami Dade County folio numbers 06-2230-000-0290, folio 06-2230-000-10120, folio number 06-2230-000-0121, and folio number 06-2230-000-0122, from low-medium density residential to commercial land use designation in order to allow a proposed commercial development consistent with the intent of the City of North Miami Comprehensive Plan and further authorize the city manager to do all things necessary to effectuate the subject Small Scale Land Use Plan Amendment as required by Florida law, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Good evening again. This application involves a land use, a small-scale land use amendment of four vacant properties, you know, which were recently annexed by the city in 2013. And those four properties, you know, cover approximately, you know, 3.7 acres, and as the chair just mentioned, covers, you know, four different parcels, 0620-230, 000290, 0620-230, 00101, 0122, 062300, 10, 0120, and 0121. As of right now, those two properties are designated on our future land use map as low-medium density. The applicant is seeking a land use change from low-medium density to commercial office in order to accommodate a proposed commercial development. And then, as with any small-scale or land use application, the land development regulation, the LDRs, provide no specific criteria that these applications, any such application has to meet in order for staff to either come and approve or deny to the Planning Commission and ultimately to the city council. The first criteria that the application should satisfy is whether the application specifically advances any goal, objective, or policy of the comprehensive plan. The second one, we have to analyze also the effect of the application on the level of service of any public infrastructure. The third one would be the impact on any environmental resources. The fourth would be the effect on hurricane evaluations. The sixth would be on the effect of the application and the availability of housing that is affordable to people who work in the city of North Miami. And finally, any other effect that city staff determines is relevant to the city council decision on that application. As we view the application, and I've analyzed the point by point whether or not this application that is in front of you tonight meets those criterias of the LDR as set forth in Section 3, Article 3, Section 3-1105. The first one, whether or not the application specifically advances any goal, objective, or policy of this comprehensive plan. Policy 9.4.6, objective 9.4 of the city comprehensive plan, states that the city shall create land use designations and zoning regulations that encourage the retention, attraction, and expansion of business and industry. Policy 9.42 further requires the city to introduce employment generating uses along major transportation corridors. The requested land use amendment is consistent with and clearly advances these goals and policy of the comprehensive plan, in that it will enable the development of undeveloped parcel which much needed employment and generating commercial uses along a corridor that has been rather dormant for years when it comes to attracting sustainable businesses. And at the time of this writing, you know, we were talking with the applicant, and then they will provide that information later on to give us, you know, an estimate as to how many jobs, you know, that application will generate in the proposed development as much, by how much they will increase, you know, the city tax. So in the report that is in front of you, you will see, you know, there's a table that highlights, you know, what is currently allowed in that land use designation and what the type of uses that permitted and what the proposed, you know, requested land use would allow. Second, we look at also the effect on level of service in public infrastructure. The first one we looked at is the traffic circulation, which we know staff is well aware that is a concern in the community. So the city's transportation master plan indicates that the roadway segment that will provide primary access to the property, mainly north east 135th Street, is already operating at a level of service F. It should be noted that Policy 28.11 of the city complaint also requires that all roadways in the city shall operate at or at or above or lowest, you know, a level of service standard of E. So the following matrix that you also have in the recommendation that we get from the Public Works Department allows a trip generation that would be, the trips, the number of trips that would be generated from the proposed commercial development. And there will be a total of 332 no trips, and with a PMP hours, a trip of 553. The traffic distribution revealed that the addition of these new trips will exceed the acceptable level of service E set forth on the city complaint as mentioned earlier. As such, and given the fact that the city is designated as a transportation concurrency exemption, TCE, or traffic impact analysis, the applicant, you know, at the time of DRC, because keep in mind, this is a request for land use change. This is the side plan we view. This is just for them to allow to move forward so they can submit, you know, a plans, a side plans for us to review at the DRC. But yet, we are aware of those concerns, so we have asked them to provide an impact statement, a traffic impact statement, that will show how they're going to mitigate the potential impacts of those new trips on already a level of service which is already low on north east 135th Street. So beyond that, staff also have made some recommendations that the primary access to the development shall be provided along the main corridor, north east 135th Street, and then that the developer should contact and coordinate with the FDOT to obtain any access permit in order to ensure that there's not just adequate access, but also that access is primarily provided along, you know, north east 135th Street, with no access being provided on north east third corridor, you know, which is abiding, you know, those single-family neighborhood. We also look at the impact on water and sewer. Again, our Public Works Department has given us some numbers as far as the number of water that would be, the impact on the city water services. Based on its location, the subject property is within a feasible distance for connection to the city's public water system. And then, one of our recommendations is that, you know, the property be connected to water sewers, and that the developer should be responsible for all of site improvement necessary to connect to the nearest gravity water main, as may be required to meet fire flow demands. Waste water or sewer, the subject property right now is on septic tank. Connection to public sanitary sewers is therefore required by the city Public Works Department, by the recommendation of the Community Planning and Development Department. The subject property, again, is within a feasible distance for connection to public sanitary sewer, and as noted by Public Works, the Public Works Department, the closest gravity sewer is on north east 131st Street, which is not too far away from the property. Again, the developer will be responsible for all of site improvement necessary to connect to that nearest gravity sewer main. And based on staff assessment, the existing, and as noted in the item that was presented before you, existing public water and sewer facility and services have sufficient capacity to meet the level of service demands of the proposed commercial development. If approved, the land use change will not adversely impact the city's level of service as related to its public infrastructure. We also look at the effect on environmental resources. The proposed land use plan amendment is not anticipated to adversely impact the cities, any of the city environmental resources. Effect on hurricane evaluation, Policy 58.3.1 of the complaint, of the complaint requires that the city review of development proposal within the coastal planning area shall consider vehicle accessibility and internal circulation pattern to minimize the time required to evacuate the coastal planning area. Again, the determination has been made that the subject site is not located within the coastal planning area, and therefore... Okay, yes. And again, as when it comes to hurricane evaluation, staff has determined that the subject site is not located within the coastal planning area and will not adversely impact hurricane evaluation. Another criteria we looked at, the effect on the availability of housing that is affordable to people who work in the city of North Miami. The proposed application involves, you know, a commercial, a land use change from low density to commercial, and it's not anticipated and will not affect the existing supply of cities, you know, affordable housing efforts. And last but not least, we've looked at... And last but not least, we've looked at, you know, any other effect that city staff may determine that is relevant to the city council or planning commission decision on this application. On December 15, there was a community outreach that was held by the developer at the Griffin Center to give the residents an opportunity to express their concerns and also allow the developer to respond to resident inquiries. Chief among these concerns were potential traffic increase, safety, drainage, flooding impacts, potential impacts on to neighborhood property values, lack of public infrastructure, high sidewalks, et cetera. Following that community meeting, the developer has met with staff to further address these concerns and propose mitigation measures to further minimize any adverse impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. The developer has voluntarily prepared a declaration of restricted covenant, warning with the land and binding the owners and their successors, which further limit development of the subject property to a set of agreed upon conditions. And these conditions are listed at the end of the report. And based on the foregoing, staff finds that the proposed Small-Scale Land Use Plan Amendment is consistent with the city's land development regulation and is compatible with the future land use goals, objective, and policy identified in the city's complaint. The community planning therefore requests that the planning commissions recommend adoption of the attached ordinance, amending the future land use map of the city's complaint for the subject property from a low-medium density residential land use designation to a commercial office land use designation and forward to the city council for final consideration, subject to the acceptance of the proper declaration of restricted covenant addressing the following issue. The first one that we, we have a list of conditions that we have, that the developers have agreed upon. The first one would be the unity of title. Within 45 days of the adoption of the ordinance approving the requested land use by the city council, the applicant shall consolidate all seven parcels into one parcel by virtue of a unity of title. The second one would be the planning. The subject property requires planning in accordance with Article 3, Division 8 of the city's LDR. As such, a T-Plat application shall be submitted to and meet with the approval of the city's, you know, development review committee prior to be considered by the planning commissions and ultimately the city council. If the T-Plat is approved by city council and the Miami-Dade County Land Development Division, a final Plat application should be filed also with the city within 180 days of the county's approval. If not, the T-Plat shall expire. Third, DRC approval. A side plan shall be submitted to and meet with the approval of the city DRC prior to the submission of any application for building permit. Said plan to include, among other things, location of structures, type size, and location of signs, off-street parking, and so forth. And also, that no access on local street such as north-east third court and limited access to Memorial Highway. A photometric plan shall also be submitted. We shall include pedestrian-scale decorative lighting fixtures no greater than 15 feet...
I'm sorry, could you, you left out a sentence that I think you need to read into the record. Could you go back and include that into the record, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, can you kind of like slow down a little bit to make sure that the audience hear clearly what you're saying?
Okay.
Try to, exactly.
Yes, sir. I will go back on the DRC approval requirements that a side plan will be submitted to the city's development review committee prior to the submission of an application for building permit. Said plan to include, among other things, the location of structures, the types, size, and locations of signs, off-street parking areas, no access on local street such as north-east third court, and limited access to Memorial Highway. Exit and entrance drives, perimeter walls, or fences, and landscaping details. A photometric plan shall also be submitted, which shall include pedestrian-scale decorative lighting fixtures no greater than 15 feet in height in order to further protect the surrounding properties. The cram ditch canal is meant. There's an existing 30-foot wide ditch depicted on the survey of the subject property, which is part of a series of ditches and canals that provide water quality treatment and storage for the drainage basins in north of north-east 135th Street. At this time, it is functional and is part of the drainage system that serves the basin area bounded by north-east 142nd Street to the north, north-east third court to the east, the C8B canal to the west, and north-east 129th Street to the south. This ditch serves as the only interconnection to the Works Park pump station. Given the critical function of that ditch, no permanent structures, sheds, non-flexible pavements, and other such non-removable structures shall be allowed to encroach on same. Consequently, nothing critical to the operation of any proposed development on the site, including entrance or exit drives, shall be considered. Traffic circulation. The proposed development will generate 553 PM daily peak hour vehicle trips. The distribution of these trips to the adjacent roadways, north-east 135th Street primarily, reveal that the addition of these new trips will exceed the acceptable level of service standard of E set forth in the city's complaint. As such, a traffic impact analysis shall be submitted to and meet with the approval of the Community Planning Development Department. Said traffic study to identify and propose multimodal strategies to mitigate the potential adverse impacts on north-east 135th Street. As noted earlier, primary access to the development shall be provided along north-east 135th Street only. The developer shall contact and coordinate with FDOT to obtain any access permit in order to ensure that the development provides adequate access to such store fare. No access shall be provided on north-east third court in order to protect the integrity of the neighboring single-family residences. Minimum sidewalks standards. Pursuant to Section 17-50 of the city's Code of Ordinances, a five-foot sidewalk shall be constructed along the frontage of the proposed development on north-east third court and Memorial Highway slash Griffin Boulevard. In addition, the developer shall dedicate a five-foot easement along north-east 135th Street for the widening of the sidewalk alongside street. In accordance with Article 5, Division 8, Section 804A of the LDRs, development on the site shall provide for an onsite pedestrian circulation system which connects the street to the primary entrances of the structures on the site and which also connects to existing pedestrian systems on adjacent properties if physically possible through sidewalks or pedestrian ways. Sustainable building program. In accordance with Section 5803H1 of the LDRs, development on the site is required to obtain, to attain, or certify, or hire designation under the LEED NC waiting system by incorporating some, if not all, of the green building principles listed in Section 5-803J of the LDRs. Water supply. Based on the proposed request, the subject property is within a feasible distance for connection to public water. As such, the city's Public Works Department requires that any development on the site be connected to public water. The developer shall be responsible for all off-site improvement necessary to connect to the nearest gravity water main as may be required to meet fire flow demands. Waste water disposal. The closest gravity sanitary sewer is located on north-east 131st Street, not too far away from the site. Based on the proposed request, the subject property is within a feasible distance for connection to public sanitary sewers and as such, any development on the site shall be connected to public sanitary sewers. The developer, again, shall be responsible for all off-site improvement necessary to connect to the nearest gravity sewer main. Stormwater management. All stormwater shall be retained on site, utilizing properly-designed seepage or infiltration drainage structures. Drainage shall be provided for the five-year storm event with full on-site retention of the 25-year three-day storm. Pollution control devices shall be required at all drainage inlet structures. All off-site drainage improvement shall meet design requirements as applicable to the corridor type. The property is located within a brownfield area. Therefore, an environmental assessment may be required prior to the approval of any drainage system. Also, a standard general environmental resource permit for Miami-Dade County Department of Regulatory and Economic Resources shall be required for the construction and operation of the required surface water management system. Site grading and development shall comply with the county and federal flood criteria requirements. Tree preservation. Chapter 20 of the city's Code of Ordinances requires the preservation of tree resources. As such, in pursuant to Article 2, Section 20-18B of the city's code, a tree removal application, which shall include a survey of the property and a tree disposition plan, shall be filed with the city's building and minimum housing department prior to the removal or relocation of any tree. Local preference. Inasmuch, it does not affect federal and state policies in terms of nondiscrimination. The developer shall hire 80% of his startup workforce from the city. The hiring office shall be located within the neighborhood of the subject site to afford priority to the surrounding residents. Additionally, the developer shall make a good fit effort to use city's contractors and suppliers. Off-site landscaping and gateway signage. In an effort to enhance the aesthetics and image of the neighborhood, the developer shall coordinate with the appropriate city and county departments to improve and further landscape the island at the wide junction of north-east 135th Street, Memorial Highway, and on north-east second court. Due to the proximity to the neighborhood residential perimeter of the overall area, the applicant is encouraged to provide lush landscaping and screening along the frontage of the project site in order to buffer any unintended impacts. The applicant is also encouraged to provide lush landscaping and buffering such as wall, a wall, not only on north-east third court between the proposed development and single-family residences at quarter street, but also to protect the two single-family residences nestled between folios 0622300000120 and 0622300000121 that are carved of the project site. The developer shall also contribute to the erection of a city gateway sign on that island. Security. In order to ensure the security of the customers as well as the nearby residences, adequate lighting shall be provided and camera installed around the property. The developer shall coordinate with the city police department to increase police presence around the area involved. And those are where the conditions that the developer has agreed upon. And then, and this is why, you know, staff, you know, we feel confident to recommend, you know, approval of the recommendation to the planning commission tonight and further to the city council. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, let's hear from the developer. Who is representing the developer?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Good evening, Mr. Woland.
I'm Frank Woland.
Yes.
I'm an attorney. My office is at 12865 West Dixie Highway, and I'm here representing the developer, Retro Source LLC, which is a Florida limited liability company. The principal of Retro Source LLC is Mr. Lee Babbitt. Mr. Babbitt is here with his wife. They just got married about a week ago. And if it's possible, Mr. Chairman, I will keep my remarks brief because I would like to give Mr. Babbitt an opportunity to be heard and I would like to give him the opportunity to put on the presentation that he has prepared, which I think you all are familiar with because it's the same presentation that was at the, at the public meeting previously. Is that all right, sir?
Yes, that's fine. The developer has the right to present.
Okay, very good. By the way, I do not represent Walmart. I am not authorized to speak this evening for Walmart. I have nice things to say about Walmart, but please don't attribute my remarks to Walmart because I'm not authorized to speak for them. Mr. Babbitt and Retro Source is here in North Miami taking this opportunity, and we do look at it as an opportunity both for the city and for the people of the city, and for the developer, and for Walmart, as it happens, to develop this group of properties totally comprising approximately six and a half acres, of which 3.7 acres is presently zoned residential, and that is the 3.7 acres which we're asking the commission to recommend rezoning for and change of the land use comprehensive plan, which is required in that regard. We are proposing a Walmart neighborhood market. This is very different than a Walmart superstore or what you might call a big-box store. It's simply a supermarket. It's the same size as most publics, 40,000 square feet. It's bigger than the Presidente Market. It's not as big as many supermarkets. I actually had occasion last Sunday evening to visit one personally. This is one of about 500 that Walmart will be building nationwide in the next year or year and a half. I found my personal experience, which took place in San Jose, California, where my daughter lives about five or six blocks away, to be a very nice experience. It's a nice, new, well-lit grocery store. It's got a lot of amenities, including the ability to check out yourself and to order things online and pick them up. It's a very nice store. We think it will bring opportunities to North Miami, both opportunities to shop and save money, as well as opportunities to help the economy, and opportunities to create jobs. I'll talk about that a little bit. As I say, we shop at Walmart and other establishments like that, establishments like Walmart, and Walmart specifically employs a lot of young people. This store will employ approximately 90 people. We've agreed that 80% of the initial employment and on a continuing basis will come from North Miami. They employ elderly people, they employ disabled people. I understand they've offered Kenny each a job as the greeter if he chooses to accept and it doesn't pose a conflict. We believe that the project is consistent with the policy's goals and objectives of the land use plan, and we think that staff's review of the project is accurate. We accept the conditions, the closing of northeast third court at an appropriate place, the landscaping, the sidewalks, the green initiatives, which Walmart already has a big part in. I would like to introduce Mr. Babbitt and let him put on his very brief presentation. He has a lot of natural enthusiasm for the project, and, Mr. Chairman, if you give me an opportunity after everyone has been heard to just briefly rebut, I'd be grateful as well.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we will hear from the developer. And when the developer has finished, then we'll be opening the public hearing and inviting you to come forward and make your comments. Now, again, we're a board of record. Everything said must be clearly heard and transcribed, so please do your best to keep the noise down, keep your comments to yourselves. Go ahead, Mr. Babbitt.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Lee Babbitt, representing Retro Source LLC. My office is at 221 West Howlandale Beach Boulevard in Howlandale Beach, area code, zip code rather, 33009. I am a licensed Florida real estate broker, developer, and I've also been a builder for almost 25 years. I was initially introduced to this property almost a year ago in my capacity as a real estate broker. I came across a, an individual group who owned the front 2.2 acres, which are presently and were at that time zoned for commercial, commercial usage, and I was asked to list the property for sale. Shortly after I listed the property, I had a resounding response. Many, many people, companies... Many, many people, companies from local as well as nationally expressed interest in this two-point-two acre parcel, which fronts along Northeast Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street and reaches to the northeast corner of Northeast One-Twenty-Fifth at Northeast Third Court.
Again, I'm sorry, that was two-point-two acres?
Two-point-two acres, yes. It's two, two land parcels combined, two distinct land parcels that combined total two-point-two acres.
Right, thank you.
I was so impressed with the response that I then started approaching other landowners contiguous to these parcels to see if they might be interested in selling their land as well, with the idea of creating a larger assemblage. It wasn't easy, but I was able to assemble a six-point-six acre parcel and of contiguous land parcels. There are a couple, a, a couple of residences that I was unable to get, not for lack of trying. At this point, we have not closed on those properties. We do not have legal ownership. We, we have contracts on, and, but we have not, do not have legal, or do not have title to those properties. Then I ran into a problem, and the problem is that when I started reaching out to retail establishments, storage facilities, those that would occupy this assemblage, no one wanted to be there. We reached out to national groups, local groups, we approached newcomers to the market, and we approached those that are already well-established, and no one wanted to be there. There is a perceived issue with the area, and concerns that were expressed to me were regarding unemployment, crime, and the level of per capita income. And for those reasons, again, no one wanted to be there. Out of, practically out of nowhere, I found someone who wanted to be there, and that was Walmart. They not only wanted to be there, but the demographics, the traffic count, the density of population caused them to identify this site as a place, quote, "we have to be." I'm enthusiastic for this project for myriad reasons. Walmart is excited because they honestly and truly believe that this is a community that they can serve and that they can serve well. And I'll, I'll also qualify what I'm, my position is I do not represent Walmart either. Had they not come to me, or had I not reached them, and had they not expressed interest in being there, we might still be talking about another project, or, or we might not. The other issues with these land parcels is it is a difficult, difficult site. There is muck, there is water, the, the, the ground itself is up to ten feet deep of muck that will have to be removed from the site so that new ground soil, new, new clean soil can be brought in to bring that up to grade. It's a low site as, already as is. There are problems with, or potential problems in that this is an identified brownfield area. This is not a, a, a land parcel that is easy to work with or inexpensive to work with, and as was expressed in last evening's meeting, and, and I was there, although I was not invited, I was there, that this is not, as was described yesterday, as a natural woods. Clearly, there are trees there that, that, that will want to stay, and there will be a, a level of mature trees that we're going to want to present outside of this conversation. But this is not an area, this is a difficult site that requires extensive demucking, removal of construction debris that has been dumped there over the years and then left to vegetate on top of that. And my guess is that if this project does not happen, what we're, what you've been looking at for many years, and what I've been looking at now for almost a year, is the same site that we're all going to be looking at for many years to come. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, remember, keep your comments, we understand, but this is his time. You will have yours.
If, if we could put the presentation up on the screen, thank you. This is the site, and if you, that the, the, the two parcels that I initially spoke of are the two, you can see delineation of those two parcels. Each one is approximately an acre, just a little over an acre. Those are zoned for commercial use. If the Walmart building was erected on those two parcels, we would not be here this evening because they're zoned for commercial use. The land parcel that runs perpendicular to Northeast Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street, adjacent to those two parcels, and extending south of those, is also a commercial site. The land component of this assemblage that sits south of the existing commercial sites is, as was previously mentioned, zoned R-four medium density, low-medium density residential, and if the buildings were being erected on those two acres that sit on the northeast corner of this parcel, the parking could be established behind that building, in which case, by, by right of the R-four zoning, again, in which case, the developer would not be here asking for your recommendation to approve a land use, small-scale land use plan amendment, or rezoning of the R-four parcels. The other parcel that I'd like to mention is on the, on the southwest edge of this assemblage. It sits just below the long retail building, and the western half of that property, that's approximately one and a quarter acres, the west half of that property is also zoned commercial. The east half of that, east of a, of what we believe is an abandoned drainage ditch, drainage canal, is zoned R-four. So theoretically, the properties that sit on the northeast corner and that abut to that running perpendicular to Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street and behind the long retail building, and the property that sits directly south of that are already commercial and could be anything that the zoning ordinance permits for commercial property. The other parcels that are zoned R-four are landlocked. There's no way to get to them other than going through these commercial properties. I have to say that had I imagined the, the outcome and the opposition that was presented at the last two meetings, had I known that to be, i- if there was any indication on that when I initially approached the city, I probably would have abandoned the project long ago, for, for many of the reasons that I spoke of before. But I believe that this project makes sense, and I believe that it makes sense for Walmart. There has been much, there has been much, there has been much miscommunication, exaggeration, there has been misstatements in the petitions, there has been a, a general scare tactic employed that, that has, that is, it's unfortunate and it's sad because with Walmart on this site, we create, we will create a convenient location, a beautiful grocery store. It's not a supercenter. It's not a big-box center. It's a grocery store, smaller to many other grocery stores. Pricing is twenty-five to thirty percent, and I speak that from what I've read, not from actual documentation, although I believe it, and that's why I'm saying it, that when, when the customers leave this Walmart, they will, their cart will cost them twenty-five to thirty percent less than if they're going to a competing store. And by being there and by having this lower pricing, they will force the competing stores to adjust their prices accordingly. This store will create upwards of one hundred jobs for the local community because that is what they seek to attract. It will create tax revenue for this city that in the first year will pay for the two-hundred-thousand dollars that's being, that's being seeked for the new Griffin Park amphitheater that was spoken about last night, in one year. That's not to mention permit fees, that's not to mention other licensing fees and other costs associated, soft costs associated with bringing this project out of the ground. It will support the local economy, it supports, that being Walmart, it supports the national economy, and, and I know I'm going to get applause on this one as well, according to a study by, there it is, Pope and Pope, who is a expert in identifying the effect of the economic effects on properties. According to the study, after two and a half years after a Walmart opens in an area, property values generally, I'll quote, "within half a mile of the store see increases of two to three percent in value." It's been...
Keep it down, ladies and gentlemen, keep it down. This is a board of record.
It has been suggested that the city buy the site for open space, that someone suggested a skating rink. I, I'm imagining that's an indoor rink, ice skating rink. There are suggestions that the land be used for other purposes. However, the reality of it, I believe, is that this is not a site, as it sits right now, that is going to, I don't believe that, that this city or any city is going to put that kind of investment into open space, and I do not believe that there are other more preferential uses for the site. I, I just want to clarify a, a couple things, and that is with respect to the, the, the staff report. There are, there are, while we, while we have, we have conversations that need to be addressed with respect to Northeast Third Court. That being, as Mr. Woland said, we, we would like to visit the possibility of closing off Northeast Third Court south of an access that would allow egress for this development to egress and left turn onto Northeast Third Court. Additionally, and, and just to back up a little bit, I, I got beyond myself. I've met with many of your public officers, officials, departments, early on. I, I met with, I met with Mr. Corker, and, and we talked about creating a community park-like setting within this development with an emphasis on, on, on health and healthy living and, and warm aesthetics. I met with Mr. Pierre-Louis in, in discussion on proper traffic control and access and utilities. I, I met with Ms. Wilson Sejour and Mr. Lebrun on many occasions about achieving the objective of city planners. I met with Councilman Vienna Me, who initially approached Walmart just about three months ago, asking them to come into town. I'm not quite sure exactly what happened between then and last night, but something happened. We understand, as developers, and in this case, I will, I will include Walmart, we understand the community's concerns, and we are prepared to develop this site in a manner that will create a place that will be safe, that will be aesthetically pleasing, that will serve the community, and that will also serve the, 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 the purpose for which it is designed. And I would say, without having a crystal ball, that there's not a person in this room that will not shop at this Walmart neighborhood market once it opens. That's just my opinion.
All right, sir, do we have any other points we need to present tonight?
Just, lastly, and just to restate, because it's important, the site, oh, let me just flip through some of these. This is current site condition, or this current slide. This is, again, what was described as a natural woods.
Can you describe where you took that shot from? Was that from the dead-end street that backs up?
Uh, we, we took it from, we, we took the shots from various areas, from the, there is no...
Last shot that you showed with the Royal Palms?
No, there, there is no dead-end street. We took it from Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street.
I believe there is a dead-end street that goes right up to the end of that property.
Oh, south, south of that? Okay, no, 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 it was taken from, it was taken from the north side.
Third Avenue.
Yes.
But those Royal Palms are within the area of the property, correct? The Royal Palms are, are within the property? May I, I'm sorry, I tried to request to speak louder. The, the question was, were, are the Royal Palms that was in that photograph that you just showed a part of that property?
This one here, yes, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, thank you. That's all I wanted to note. Thank you. Are, are there any other trees other than the Royal Palms, such as an oak trees, or any native Flor- Florida plants?
Ladies and gentlemen...
Mr. Ernst? We, we have not...
Let me get the answer from the developer.
We have not done a study of the trees, but I can assure you that in our site plan submittal, whatever needs to satisfy the city and the ordinance and Walmart's requirements and Retro Source's requirements, because we are environmentalists as well, will be taken into consideration. And we are most, most, most desirous of working out these issues to the mutual satisfaction of everyone that's involved.
Thank you.
And, and again, just in closing, I just want to show the, the graphic of the site that is identified in yellow. Those are the parcels that are presently zoned for commercial use. And again, if the Walmart building is built on that site with the parking in the rear, or if the building is situated perpendicular to Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street, the adjacent parking, the adjacent sites that are identified in white would be an allowable use under the R-four zoning to put parking. You might say, why, why are we here? And, and the answer is quite simply because Walmart and we as a developer don't think that putting the site up front is the best, most logical way to situate the building for the property, for the residents, and for the community. And that, that's why we're here, and that's why we're not just moving right on to site plan approval and building permits.
All right, sir, are there further items to present tonight?
No, sir, no, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, now, before we go into the public hearing, do any of the commissioners have a question for the developer?
Should we leave the slide with the yellow outline up just for reference?
Well, it's really the white outline that's at issue.
Right, okay. Well, either way, or something for ref, something for reference for the, the people speaking?
If you'd like to do that, sir, would you go back to the slide with the white outline?
We're, we're having some technical difficulties here. Oh, there we go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
While we're waiting, I need to get a clarification if...
Microphone, speak into the microphones.
Leave me over this close.
Yeah, I know, the, the mics are not well-positioned for this.
I, I have questions regarding the covenants that we, that were outlined by staff. I don't know if this is the time to bring them up, or should we wait till after public hearing to address those?
I'd say go ahead and get your questions out to staff at this time.
Okay. It mainly involves, and I'll address counsel on this, language change on a couple of the covenants, if it's permitted for us to add or subtract any kind of language that staff initiated with the covenant. In other words, I...
Yes, you can, you can fashion a modification to whatever's here, and that includes the, the items listed to be on a covenant, running with the land. Yes, sir.
If it pleased, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ernst.
Three, three of the covenants I wanted to draw attention to was covenant number three, the D.C., DRC, where we discussed limited access to Memorial Avenue. I wanted to, I would like to find some language to explain the scope of the limited access. In other words... In other words, when they said limited access, did that mean they could just say, okay, well, we won't let big trucks drive through there, or we won't allow right turns? I would like to be able to see some sort of language in the covenant that would be more specific to what they mean by limited access.
To Northeast Third Court, as it relates to that court?
Memorial Highway.
You know, on number three, you said?
On number three, Memorial Highway is listed along with that. Griffin Memorial is the same, same thing. We said, and I call your attention to no access on local streets such as Northeast Third Court, and limited access to Memorial Highway. Either we change that to describe the limited action, or we change it to no, no access. So that's, that's something I would like to see incorporated in the language.
All right, that would take a recommendation at the end of this, if, if it gets to that point.
All right, all right. That would be a recommendation for approval, if that's where...
All right. Then, so they continue with the two other items?
Put out the other two, and let's get them...
The other two items would be with regard to item on the water supply, item eight, which at the very end of that whole paragraph, after we discuss meeting fire flow demands, I would like to include a language which says that the developer would be, must, must be responsible for the completion and resurfacing of any or all roadways affected by the installation or construction of sewer lines, water lines, entrances and exit accesses. Nothing was addressed in that that I feel is important, that he would have to understand that it's his dime that would be necessary because of the impact that the construction may, may be put upon that neighborhood, either Memorial Highway, 135th Street, or Third Court.
All right, that's something that could be addressed as a recommendation, if we get to that point.
Okay.
What's your last item?
And the last thing on tree preservation, I'm asking at the very end that we include a city code inspector, a city staff member must be onsite to monitor tree preservation to remove or any existing tree, plants, or foliage be removed or damaged in any way, and that the onsite observer shall be also included in that disposition, disposition plan. In other words, if they draw up a plan, that the onsite inspector would be included in the wording of that plan, so that there would be a, an onsite inspector, and that the developer would pay for that inspector to be onsite during a time of tree removal or, or land excavation. And that the developer would be responsible for any fines or damage that would take place, and that possibly face a fine or even revocation of the overall project per, building permit.
All right, those are issues that can be addressed as recommendations when all is said and done, if we get to that point.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sir, Ms. Ernst.
All right, back to condition number three, is there, what's the definition of a limited access tomorrow? What is, what is the intent of that statement? Does it mean like restricted right?
Yeah, the intent of that statement is only to allow a right turn as they exit, to just go on, not, second court and exit on, not this 135th.
So the proposal is for an exit only, not an entrance?
Exactly, and then a right turn only.
And a right turn only.
Yeah, not to allow them to go back onto Griffin, you know.
Correct. I think if you just put limited access, maybe...
Why don't, why don't we spell that out?
That's what I'm asking for.
It would be more appropriate to spell that out as, as no entrance, exit only, right turn only.
Right out.
That would be spelled out, yes.
All right, that's, that'll go as a recommendation, yes, sir.
Yeah, and then another, an item number, a condition number four...
And then again, that's if we get to that point.
That's if we get to that point.
Okay, if we get to that point.
And then condition number four, kind of towards the bottom, I'd say, fourth line up, you specify non-flexible pavement will not be, and other such non-removable structures shall be allowed to encroach on the same. And they're talking about, I guess, that 30-foot easement?
Yeah, the ditch.
What, what is considered a non-flexible pavement? What do you mean by that?
That's a good question. Actually, that's a language we get actually from the man in the county office, that's what they say, and then I was just trying to be consistent with what they say, so I just include that language into the report to be consistent. But, but, but what, basically, for us, you know, we cannot allow any structures, permanent structures, and any, even any access, you know, to that easement, because it is very critical to the, to their operation there.
Correct.
So, so basically, they can have like maybe, I mean, maybe it can be a landscaped area.
My understanding of it, typically, when you see non-pavement, that means no concrete.
No concrete, exactly.
And that's what's being shown on the current site plan, I just want you to know that, or to state that.
Yeah, this statement was submitted before we wrote the recommendation. I mean, and, and also, this statement is just, you know, for informational purpose, because we know that at that point we're reviewing a site plan, they, that statement was just submitted for, just for informational purpose. But our recommendation, when they go to DRC, we will ensure that, you know, they abide to all those conditions that are herein specified.
Assuming we get to that point, all right.
And I have a question for staff, please.
All right, one question for staff, Mr. Prevertel?
Yeah, and it's, it's also for the benefit of the audience, I'd like to affirm or confirm what was said by the developer, that the parcel as it stands, which is zone, already zoned commercial, let me back up, this, the overall configuration is supported by community planning and development, that, that's, you're giving us a recommendation to approve this parcel, so you understand the overall composition. I'm going back to just the commercial parcel, and it was said that those three lots that are just commercial could accommodate a Walmart. Is that in fact true?
As of what, this is just another, you know, a commercial shopping center, it's a commercial use which is allowed by right, permitted by right in that district, in the C1 district. So if they were to come and just for that site, they would only have to go to the DRC approval. And then, and most, I mean, we could try to get some of the conditions here, but, you know, I think this is the proper venue for us to impose certain things, we must stringent on them. But if they could have come as a matter of right and build that, and then without even coming to you to ask for anything.
They could build it as a...
It's a permitted use, yeah.
Okay, and just to go back to the developer, did you possibly imply that if you were not approved for this site plan, the amplified site plan, that you would still continue the plans with your entitlement to do some development of the site, that you would develop on the existing commercial parcels?
Yes, sir, that is, that is a viable option, yes.
Okay, I hope the, I hope the people in attendance appreciate that, because I think a lot of people might be under the impression that this is sort of, that a complete stop of some sort could be put onto this, or there could be other intervention by the city. But once the parcels are privately owned, it's, it's hard to do that, to twist an arm in that sense. I don't even know if there's some sort of undertaking to be able to, even if the city wanted to, take it over as a park. So this is really a debate on site plan configuration and the various aspects of that. And I thank you for your, for your answers.
All right, if, if that concludes the questions from the...
I have a couple.
You've got a question, all right, go ahead, Mr. Eech.
With regards to item number 13, here again, clarity, clarity of fact. Item number 13, clear, okay, and it says, "The applicant is also encouraged to provide lush landscaping and buffering, such as a wall not only on Northeast Third Court between the proposed development and single-family residence across the street, but also to protect the two single-family residents nestled between the two folio numbers." Well, it just seems to me that we don't encourage, you know, that could mean anything, that's open-ended. If we're going to do something, we specifically say what we want done there. I'll give you an example, behind the Home Depot on Biscayne Boulevard, you wouldn't even know it's there. I, I walk every day, and I do about six miles, I just want you to know how much I am. And, and what happens is, well, sometimes I take a shortcut behind Home Depot, and it's a beautiful, beautiful passage over there, you wouldn't even know it's there because it's landscaped properly, it, it is very wooded and so forth and so on, we, we spell that out. And I, I have a couple other questions, I'd like to ask the developer, if I may, while we're here. If, if we're so concerned with putting a Walmart in there, then why do we have a fast food restaurant? Why are we having a gas station? And I'm looking at, I, I drove that neighborhood today. Folks, you don't know me, I was a police officer here for some 27 years, and I used to patrol the Griffin Boulevard area, and I seen it going down, I seen it going up, and I see it coming back very beautifully. However, I didn't, the new, the new area that's annexed into the city, I was not familiar with, so I went out there and I was looking around it, around it today. And what I don't understand is, off of Memorial Highway, you have that commercial piece of land there, and you want to use that as an exit. Well, if you want, if you're really concerned about the neighborhood, why not make that into a park, lush landscaping, and move everything forward? You know, and, and the other concern I had is those two houses that didn't sell to you. That looks like, I, I feel bad for those people, they've been in that neighborhood for years, it's terrible. I've seen this happen in other areas of the city, where you have an apartment building going up, and then there's a...
With all due respect, ladies and gentlemen, applause cannot be typed into the record, so please try to contain yourself.
It's hard not to applause for Commissioner Eech.
These are my concerns, and I seen this out there, and if it's just going to be a straight Walmart, and you want to put a restaurant inside the store like other supermarkets do, well, so be it. But why a fast food restaurant? Why a gas station? And this is zoned commercial on that site? Why impede into the neighborhood? You know, folks, something's going to be built out there, it's commercial. So the destiny is in your hands, you know, I, I, I mean, and I agree with you, and I see the number of areas in the city that would develop with a nice buffer. I, I live on a canal, there's a shopping center on the other side of the canal, there's a 30-foot buffer of a wooded area, we don't even know it's there. I seen what Johnson and Wales did with their pedestrian wall out there, which is absolutely gorgeous. I look behind Villa Maria, and I see a beautiful parkway out there. It, it's just absolutely gorgeous, they have a park, it's tranquil for the neighborhood, the neighbors go and they enjoy it. We have to coexist between commercial development and, and the residential area, but just to throw a box in there and say, hey, this is what we got, and, and, no. And also, with regards to parking, I, I just did a conference with the CRA downtown back in September, I seen some beautiful, beautiful parking structures instead of grade level. And, you know, a little creativity, something gorgeous in that neighborhood, and you win the support of these people, but just to throw a box in there, I, I'm trying, I'm not trying to be condescending, I, you know, I want to hear the people here, and, anyway, I said enough, thank you.
I, I would, I would respond to that, that given the opportunity, again, as I said before, given the opportunity to work with the city and with the people that, that are employed to ensure the proper things that you're speaking of, we, we want to accomplish that. We're, you know, what you have in front of you is, is a concept, it, it's a concept. The gas station, it, it belongs to and is a requirement of Walmart. Fast food, a fast food restaurant doesn't have to be a fast food restaurant. It doesn't have to be a fast food restaurant. However, the economics and the costs of the site, and the costs to improve it for reasons I mentioned earlier, necessitate that other things need to go on to that in order to make the numbers work. And, and, and that's all part of it. And I, I would just like to, okay, I'm sorry, I would just like to clarify, because it's very important, and I'm not sure that it was communicated, with respect to the DRC approval on Northeast Third Court, we need the left turn out onto Northeast Third Court. But as a compromise, what, what we would consider, and, and it would be to, in conjunction with the traffic study, which we will be employing to, to close off Northeast Third Court, so that no one can make a right coming out of the egress, the access there, but we do need the left turn out to ensure, and then the right turn off of Northeast Third onto 135th Street. We can't have everybody coming in and going out of the same place.
No, you, you don't have to, but there's also other, other things you can pull out of your hat, and put a traffic light out there, there's so many other ways to do.
Absolutely.
Sir, I don't, I don't want to debate it, now, I've been in this business 33 years, and...
I agree, and then...
Kenny, Kenny, let's, let's remember that the first item here is the LDR amendment, if that passes, we, we don't want to get into site plan weaknesses, strengths, design, redesign, it will really be here till the cows come home.
The, the only other item that I'd like to clarify, because I'm, I, I didn't hear Mr. Lebrun, but I want to make sure that we understand that with respect to, I'm not sure if it's item five or item six, the sustainable building program, this, we are not proposing that this be a LEED-certified building. We will, it will include green initiatives, and it will meet code, it'll be comparable to LEED-certified components, and, and both by Walmart's directive, by our own, and, and by the code, but we are not proposing here that this be a LEED-certified building, I just want to make sure that, that's...
That's a point of order, Mr. Chair.
But the covenant has, has expressed that, the covenant that the city has laid out had expressed that it would be LEED-certified, is that not correct, staff?
That's what we specified, but there are other comparable programs out there, which is not everybody...
So in turn, that if he rejects it, then that becomes a deal breaker, correct?
There are other certifying agencies, and I think that's what the developers try, by the way, it's item number seven, I just want to clarify that for the record, but there are other green entity site out there they, they could apply to, not necessarily to the specific ones, so there are other, there are other comparable...
We've included that into the covenant?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm confused. That when I, when I see that it has to be certified or higher designation under the LEED NAC rating system, I don't see any movement on that.
That would seem to be an obligation to follow that.
Yes, and, and if we go by article, the section of the code that deals with the green sustainable element, it's, it specifies clearly it has to be LEED-certified, but we understand that there are comparable program out there, and that's why, you know, this is also where we can make those changes, otherwise we would have amended, tried to go to text amendment to the code to do those type of things.
Well, why can't we just say we're doing LEED initiatives, rather than saying he's actually going to be certified?
I mean, we can, we can change that, because this is straight from, this is straight from the...
You have to change that, if not, he has to get certified.
No, no, definitely, yes.
Okay.
All right, if that wraps that part up, we want to get, you have...